Welcome, everyone. If you're turning in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, everyone, and welcome to the February 7th Board of Alderman meeting. Up first, we have the minutes of the previous meeting, January 18th. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion to approve. It's been seconded. Is there any corrections, alterations, changes? Hearing and seeing none. With all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. This brings us to outside the rail. We have Mary Beth Foley and Shelley Lutz, the Vermont Trail update. And there are handouts in your pocket. Mary Beth and Shelley.
Good evening. My name is Mary Beth Foley. I live in Center Rutland, and I'm a volunteer for the Velemon Trail chapter of the Vermont Mountain Bike Association, or VIMBA. I've been on the Rutland Town Planning Commission for the last three years, where I focused on parks and trail projects. I'm also a member of the Marble Valley Runners, which holds group runs and races in Pinehill Park and throughout the city. My colleague Shelley Lutz is the treasurer of the Pinehill Partnership and has been instrumental in the park's development over the last 20 years. She is also on the Velemon Trail Board. Andy Shin is a Rutland City resident and business owner, the president of Pinehill Partnership, and the treasurer of the Velemon Trail Chapter. As you may have guessed, we are mountain bikers and skiers, like many of our fellow residents. The Velemon Trail was created to link many communities hosting mountain bike trail networks in Vermont to create a unique long-distance trail that will allow for multiple-day trips. The Velemon Trail is a chapter of the Vermont Mountain Bike Association, or VIMBA. The trail will connect towns, villages, and recreation centers from the northern border of Vermont to the southern border. Some sections of the trail have already been built, and other sections are shovel-ready, mostly in Rochester and Pittsfield, Vermont. With the current, um, the trail currently planned to end at the old Turnpike Road area of Mendon, north of Route 4. So we're looking at taking it from there through Rutland. Most sections of the trail throughout the state are just conceptual, with most of the work to be done still in planning before the trail can be constructed. Andy, Shelley, and I are part of a group of mountain bikers, skiers, and trail runners who want to see the trail go through Rutland, both so we can enjoy it ourselves and so we can also experience the social and economic benefits of visitors staying at our inns, eating at our restaurants, shopping at our stores, and experiencing our culture and scenery along the way. The last few years have seen a surge in interest in recreation, especially mountain biking and backcountry skiing. The Velemon Trail is meant to connect the longtime recreators and volunteers with those new to the sport, and to connect communities without relying on cars. This will be our section to help plan, build, and maintain, and we have a unique and urgent opportunity for our community to be involved in this very exciting project. The Velemon Trail Chapter is focused on working with partners, like local recreation companies, towns and cities, and trail organizations like the Pinehill Partnership in Rutland. The support of communities like Rutland, who have already demonstrated their support for recreation by building awesome trail networks, are essential to make this project a reality. Since this trail is in the early stages of development, and not much is set in stone yet, we want to make sure it goes through Rutland so our community can benefit and we can show the world this wonderful place we call home. Our goal is to pull together a team to show our enthusiasm and local support now, because we're looking at starting to apply for grants as early as June 2022, and there's a lot of work to be done. Our main goal is to ask for your general support for this project as representatives of Rutland City. Due to the complexity of the project and the time commitment involved, we're asking you to consider this project in a Board of Alderman Committee to help us move forward in the best possible way for Rutland. We are envisioning the committee would have two main purposes. First, to help identify potential partners and available grants for planning, conserving, and constructing the trail in collaboration with the Velemon Trail Chapter. And second, to help us identify the best routes through the city, which would involve considering the starting and ending points to the east and west, looking at city-owned properties and destinations like the Rutland Rec Community Center and Pinehill Park, identifying interesting and scenic highlights along the trail that will showcase the best Rutland has to offer, utilizing existing and planned trails like the Creek Path, and focusing on areas with landowner support. We are open to any suggestions you may have on how to proceed, and we are hoping that you'll consider the Velemon Trail in one of your committees to help us move forward in the most efficient way in this project. So we're happy to answer any questions you might have, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Questions, comments from the board? Alderman Clifford?
I don't have a question. I was just going to move to refer the matter to community and economic development.
Second.
Have a motion. It's been seconded. Any discussion, debate questions on that referral? Hearing and seeing none. With all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Any? Alderman Talbot?
Can I get your contact information?
Sure.
Alderman Neary says he has it, so I'll get it.
Any other questions, comments, before we let her go? All right, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
So we are still outside the rail. Are there other members of the community who?
Yes.
Just give us your name and your town, please.
If you don't mind, I'm going to remove this while I'm talking.
Sure.
Hi, guys. My name's Lopee. Lopee Leroux. I'm a local muralist, and I'm just here to update you on the saga of the street lamp that is my nemesis. So since I was here, you guys remember, right? The commissioner sent his assistant out to look at and assess the light at night, and he reported back to the commissioner that it's not an issue. And I beg to differ, because I live there, and there is, it's every single day negatively impacting my quality of life. The street lamp is shining directly in my bedroom window, and yeah, I have managed to get, you know, like the dark, the curtains and stuff, but it's still, it's just flood, it's a, it's an issue of light trespass. And so as far as solution, I feel like I've reached an impasse with him, and so I'm coming to you guys to see if there's any other solutions that might be equitable between, like, my need for not having a light shining in my window and on my front lawn and everything, and the needs for pedestrian security and safety, like, because it's on Granger Street by, where that bridge is out. And my own personal, like, assessment of the situation is that there is, so there's one light post on this one side of the bridge, and then there's another light post on the other side of the bridge. The one on the other side is further away from my property, and there's no street light on that one. So I've been observing the traffic patterns, and it seems that most people come from Park Street over on Granger. And so thinking about pedestrian safety, I was thinking that if the light was simply taken off that post and put on the other post, that it would still take care of the visibility of pedestrians, and it would be further away, it would probably still impact me some, but it would be much reduced. So that was one solution. And the other solution I thought of was, the commissioner told me that the new LED lights cannot house a shutter, you know, the idea I was having, but he said that the old ones possibly could. And so I was just thinking, maybe we could go retro, and if the old ones still exist in storage somewhere, maybe we could, that would be another solution to swap it out and put that one on and put a shutter on. So, I don't know, I feel a little silly, because it seems a little bit selfish, especially considering Brock was here and, like, the awesome trail and everything, but I, I do contribute to the community, and I am now a homeowner here, so it's my, going to be my forever home. So I would really appreciate it if I could get some assistance in resolving this matter. So, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? So we are still outside the rail. Are there other members of the public who wish to address the board on items not on the agenda? Hearing and seeing none. Mayor Laird, all you.
Okay, thank you very much, and good evening, everyone. I have two separate issues before you tonight. If I could, I did send you a memo, and the first request is going to be for your, to untable the nomination of Peg Florrie to become a member of the Rutland City Police Commission, and take a vote on that.
All right, we have a motion. It's been seconded to remove from the table the nomination of Peg Florrie for police commission. With all those in favor of removing from the table, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. And Clerk Heck will circulate the box. And while Clerk Heck walks around, if you want to jump onto the next thing.
Sure, I'd be glad to. The second request is, I'm actually coming in with, to submit the name of Brian Boudreau to nominate him to the Board of Commissioners for the Rutland Redevelopment Authority. I did send you, I believe, his resume and a cover letter that I hope everyone got. Brian is a fairly new resident of the city. He had been, been here for a couple of years. He has opened a business over on Center Street, Greenspell Plants, I believe it's, it's called, and wants to be a part of the decision-making process and to move the city forward. And I've had a couple of good conversations with Brian. I think he would be a great member of the Board of Commissioners, and I would like to propose putting his name forward for you and have you table it and vote on it at your next meeting.
So moved, please.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to table, and it has been seconded, the nomination of Brian Boudreau to the IRA. With all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that motion is tabled.
And I think finally, I'll try to address the storm over the weekend. We've all had several emails and concerns about the sidewalks. I have had a chance to talk with Jim Rotundo here today. The press has been speaking with Jim. I believe there's going to be an article in the paper tomorrow. Anyway, it comes down to a matter of the length of the storm, the size of the, the amount of snow that we got, and the fact that there, our crews were out for 36 hours straight, starting, I believe, Friday morning and going into, or Thursday night going into Friday night, whatever it was, and then coming back to clean up downtown over the weekend. And of course, at the same time, we had one of the sidewalk plows go down, so at one point there was only two to get out there. But they are out there. They were out all day today. All three are working. I know Jim has made it a priority for getting those sidewalks cleaned up on previous storms. I think this was a little bit bigger than we had anticipated, and, you know, again, we're trying to do the best we can with what we have, and, you know, next storm, hopefully there won't be one this year. We'll do a lot better.
Very good. Thank you. Any, any questions, comments from Mayor? Alderman Gillum?
Are they going to do State Street tonight?
I, I don't have a breakdown of which streets they're going to do, but...
Issues with people walking on Route 4.
Yeah, they, they were, they're all over this, I was all over the city this weekend, and they were in the streets, and I understand the concern, especially around the schools. And I think that concern has been relayed from me to the powers that be.
Very good. No other questions? Thank you, Mayor Laird.
You're welcome.
All right, that brings us to additions and deletions to the agenda. I believe we have two. One would be under the Board of Control Commissioners, Masala Corner, and that is a first and third class?
First class.
First class, liquor license. And the second would be the Board of Civil Authority Letter/Resolution to sign and send off to the state. So I get a motion to add those two items.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion. It's been seconded. With all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you very much. This brings us to reports and letters from department heads and officials. First up, we have Andrew, the disposition of city-owned property. This is page two. Andrew, I still can't say your last name. I apologize.
It's okay. Strenestie.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The City-Owned Properties Committee is recommending the disposition of 156 South Street to Doug Walker. He's attending today's meeting over there in the corner. The recommended, or the bid amount was $15,000. The committee met on January 7th, scheduled the presentations for January 21st. We invited three applicants to participate and provide presentations. Only two ended up showing, and one of them was Doug, and another one was Boniface, who has also worked in the city. After the presentations, the committee deliberated and then reconvened on January 26th, where they made the recommendation to, for Doug Walker.
Alderman Talbot?
Motion to authorize the, suspend the rules? Motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. With all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
And a motion to authorize the sale of 156 South Street to Doug Walker for the purchase price of $15,000 pursuant to Section 6.2 of the Rutland City Charter, and to further authorize the mayor to sign all purchase and sale-related documents.
Second.
All right, we have a motion. It's been seconded. Is there any discussion, debate, questions? Doug, do you want to say anything?
I'm good.
Sure.
You say thank you.
All right. Well, hearing no questions or feedback, with all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. All right. Up next, we have Chief Lovett. I request RFP base radios firehouse to be placed on desk. You should have it on your desk. And then Chief Lovett.
So, if I may, Mr. Chairman, before Chief Lovett begins, then Superintendent Peters, these two motions were approved via the Finance Committee, so I have no objection to them going first, but just so they know that the carts before the horse in this kind of a situation, because my minutes, reports won't come up till next. Okay? But it was approved, I just want to know that it was approved by the Finance Committee for both Superintendent and the chief to request for proposals.
Yes.
Okay. Would you like to wait?
No, that's fine.
I think it's, unless there's any objections, but I'm just clarifying for people who may be tuned in to understand that. They'll hear about this subsequently, but this is an approved thing through the committee.
All right. I'm here tonight to ask for your support and authorization to go out for an RFP on the replacement of the radio system at the fire station. We met with the Finance Committee over the last three weeks discussing the money from ARPA, and they had acknowledged our need and told us to move forward, so to follow the procedures of the city and the purchasing. Myself and Superintendent Peters is here tonight to ask for permission to put out an RFP and see how much this radio system is really going to cost us.
All right.
So, I'll move for the approval to request, to seek proposals for the radio at the fire second.
All right, we have a motion, it's been seconded, to approve the request to seek an RFP for the radios. Is there any questions, discussion, debate out there?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just that the request, I believe, and Chief Lovett can correct me if I'm wrong, was not to exceed the $250,000 that was presented if there were any urgent planned requests.
Very good. Just no further discussion, questions, or debate? Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Chief Lovett, you are still up, request to dispose obsolete equipment.
Yes, asking for permission tonight to dispose some obsolete fire equipment. We have 64 sets of firefighter pants, 69 coats, and 10 helmets. These are all with, are outside of the 10-year useful life of the pants. NFPA, which is governing body that kind of oversees us and all fire emergency services, 1851 states that all turnout gear should be disposed of and taken out of service within 10 years. What I'm asking the board for tonight is permission to dispose of it. It's a rather large volume of gear, but it's been stockpiled at the station for a number of years. Mainly, what we've always done in the past is either we find a vendor that's providing, like, a fire school. Fire Academy, for instance, here in Vermont, would do, and take some of this gear and dress mannequins for live-fire training. We also have a relationship with a gentleman down in Indianapolis, and he's allowed our people to go down and train over the last five years, I think, and he's expressed an interest in this gear. So basically, he'll ship or pay for the shipping, the boxing, so on, then he'll discount our enrollment in his next classes, to some extent, I'm not sure exactly what yet, but his intention would be to use it in live-fire training.
Alderman Clifford?
Move to suspend the rules?
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. With all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I move to authorize the chief to dispose of the old turnout gear according to his rules and regulations.
Second.
All right, we have a motion. It's been seconded. Any questions, comments, debate? Hearing and seeing none. With all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
And the last thing I have is I have three old radio repeaters that don't work with any radio frequencies that the city of Rutland owns or is licensed to. They were given to us and the thought that maybe someday might be something we can use. Two of them are non-operational. One would take about $1,500 to get it operational, and yet it doesn't work with any of our radio frequencies. So I wish the board to allow me to dispose of them through recycling, because they have no value.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion. It's been seconded.
Oh, God. That's not recycling.
There's no further questions or comments, debate? With all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Next, Kim Peters, updates and requests. Kim?
All right, I'm going to let Tyler start off with the Main Street Park.
Hello, everybody. I guess first of all, I'd like to thank you all for your overwhelming consideration and the support of the Main Street Park project at the last meetings. It's been, it's been amazing. So obviously, lots of time and a well-thought-out process has been gone into awarding these monies for the ARPA funds for many projects, but as of tonight, Kim, myself, and the whole Recreation Department would like permission from the board, the mayor, to do an RFP for the Main Street Park project. And in that proposal, we'd be getting architectural, civil, mechanical, and structural engineering designs done for the park project, so.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules. It has been seconded. With all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
And I'll move to approve the request for the RFP for the Main Street Park project.
Second.
All right, we have a motion. It's been seconded. Any comments, questions, debate? Hearing and seeing none. With all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to have Slade Stebski stand up. I'm going to take this time to recognize Slade. He's a senior at Rutland High School. He recently received Gatorade Player of the Year. It's a huge honor. It is, is something that Rutland should be proud of, and with this honor, he received $1,000 to gift to an organization of his choice. He chose Rutland Recreation Department. We have already received the money. We have updated our kids' zone, new equipment of fitness for little kids under the age of 10, gymnastics mats, a rock climbing wall. So if you get a chance, please come by and see that. So in honor of Slade, I just want to congratulate him. Slade was also an intern for the rec department this past year, him along with Jack Coughlin. They did such a wonderful job. They were here during the budget season. So believe it or not, they helped a lot with our budget and why we do the budget, and it was a huge honor to have him. He's also, along with Jack, been selected to be a part of the Shrine Game. Again, a very huge honor, and I just want to congratulate Slade. Thank you for everything you've done for the rec. He's actually employed by the rec as of about two weeks ago, where he will be a counselor at our summer camp. So thank you, Slade, so much for everything, and basketball this week, and let's see some wins. So, congratulations. Okay, so about every six months, I try to give an update of where we're at with the rec. I'm not going to read everything. I just want to highlight a few, a few of the program's events that we have upcoming. One that's coming up this weekend at Georgetty along with Shelley and the Pinehill Partnership is the Outdoor Cold Rolled Rutland Event. Super excited. We should bring in about a little over 150 is what we're, what we're seeing for that event. It's an outside event. Our revenue, at this point, we, I, I tend to look at our revenue expenses weekly and sometimes daily, just to see where we're at. With the rec, we do, we do depend on our revenue coming in, so we should be about 70% of where we're at, and so our revenue is looking really good in all departments. So with Rahab being back this year and going really strong, our revenue for Georgetty is just about 75% complete. Gonic Adult Center, I've said it so many times, April, our program director has done a phenomenal job of keeping that place moving. It is no longer just programs. You have people coming in throughout the day to socialize, to play cards, to do yoga, and then we get a lot of rentals on the weekends, birthday parties and bridal showers. So again, that's where she makes some of her revenue, and she's about 82% of her revenue complete. The rec, the, the Community Center. This past month, we saw 900 members join. We've partnered with, with the hospital. They have, they're sending their employees there. We then bill the hospital for them coming and keeping their wellness. We still work with Community Care Network. You know, all day long, we are busy. We actually extended our hours to open at 6:00 in the morning to, again, help with teachers, healthcare workers that might start, and that way they get a good start to their day. That's been already very successful, opening a little bit earlier. Sometimes I have to take that morning shift if, if I don't have a seasonal employee that gets there by 6:00 a.m. We've added pickleball, adult pickup, youth wrestling. Our youth theater just had their Matilda production there this weekend. They had just their family only. That was something that we really wanted to, to get done. They've worked so hard, and with the Paramount and still with COVID, we did it at the gym and just spread out. So a huge congratulations to our youth theater. You can look at all the out, the outside rentals that we have. We actually just secured state gymnastics meet. It's for the state of Vermont. We will see, I think they host nine sessions, so that's going to be mid-March, and again, that's revenue coming in to the rec center. So we're about 83% of budget right there for revenue. As far as our upcoming programs, we started registering our summer camp on Monday. One of our locations is currently completely filled, so we have two other locations that are already getting just about close to being filled as well. And I mentioned that, too, because throughout the last three years, we've increased every year about 25% to help assist Rutland Public Schools that may not have the capacity. So every year, we work with them, what are their needs, and then we, we increase our capacity as much as we can with our outdoor camps. We also offer payment plans beginning right away. Most of our families are paid off before summer camp even starts. So we do a lot of that behind the scenes to make sure that, that it is affordable for our residents. Plus, our, our city residents can apply for scholarships, which they do, and so we help, help in that way. Overall, we... Overall, um, we're already starting to plan for summer, so we're always three months ahead, looking at what we're, we're starting next. Um, so overall budget revenue, we're about eighty-six percent, and expenses, we're at sixty-four, so that's, that's pretty normal to where we typically are, um, especially because our programs hit so fast with revenue, uh, and expenses right in the beginning of July and August. So, I'm really happy with where we're at. Our staff's doing an amazing job, and, you know, something I, I like to mention is that we will hire just about eighty high school college kids from this area. So, we, with the pool and with the summer camps and with the specialty camps, it is a way for our high schoolers and college kids to come in, make a difference in our little extra money, and then spend it right back in Rutland because I know for myself, my four kids, they don't save very well, they just, they go back out and just spend it. Um, so, thank you for all your support. At any time, feel free to stop by the Rec Center, um, it's ever-changing, and, um, it's, it's a great place to work, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, if there's no objection, could we jump to the Board of Control Commissioners? We have the owners here.
Chair.
Um, let them speak and get out of here, so I'll entertain a motion to go into the Board of Control Commissioners.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion, it's been seconded. With all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
All right, so we have a request, uh, and clerk, I believe you have it, it's from Masala Corner, First Class Liquor License.
And I do apologize for not getting this to the board. Um, these folks came in today, they're, um, the new owners of what was the Coffee Exchange. They're looking at opening a, uh, Indian restaurant there on the corner. Uh, they're very excited in regards to get, uh, get going and stuff. I'll, I'll let them speak here in just a minute. And again, I just wanted to explain to the board because I hadn't gotten your, uh, permit out to them and stuff, just to take a look around. Um, but at the end of the day, you may ask any questions you'd like. This is just a motion to circulate for signatures, it's just for first-class licensing, it's beer and wine specific. Uh, I know that, uh, those folks are looking at potentially being open in, uh, the next four weeks, maybe to six weeks, and I just thought if we could do it tonight for them, we'll give them a two-week jumpstart instead of waiting until the twenty-second, so I really appreciate it.
I'll move to circulate for signature.
Second. Have a motion to circulate for signature, it's been seconded. With all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
I'll move to go out of the Board of Control Commissioners.
Second.
Right, have a motion, it's been seconded to go out of the Board of Control Commissioners. With all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Um, if you would like a chance to speak about what you're doing down there at the corner, we would love to hear.
Just yeah.
We love you. Sorry.
First of all, we'd like to thank Henry for such short notice and bringing us over here and taking, and passing this through everybody. This has been a lifelong dream for my wife and me, so we are really, really excited to bring this to downtown Rutland. We're already, um, we're already serving Indian food in Weston, which is, uh, taken off very well. We've done a few farmer's markets, and, uh, the response has been tremendous. So, we decided to take this, um, take this on at such a time. It's, uh, it's, 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 we don't know if it's the right or wrong time, but we know we, this has been a dream, and this opportunity will not come to us to get a location like this. So, um, that's the reason we're doing this. We have everything in place to get going. Um, the only thing we need are, are licenses, and we should be up and running, um, like, um, uh, maybe within four or five weeks. Um, hopefully, we can, um, serve the community and have everybody, um, enjoy some ethnic cuisine. Um, uh, we've lived in India for over twenty, half our life, and we've been here half our life, so, so, um, so, all the knowledge that we have, um, we're gonna put into this project.
Wonderful. It'll be wonderful to have that corner filled.
Yeah, we will, we will definitely brighten it up, and we will definitely make it feel like it's a, you know, it's a little bit of India over there, so when you step in there, you'll definitely get a little bit of feel of that. And, of course, the food will, will speak for itself, and we hope everybody will enjoy it. We really appreciate this opportunity, guys.
Wonderful. Congratulations.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, man.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's move back to reports of standing committees. Up first, we have Alderman Davis, Finance Committee.
Thank you. So, the Finance Committee has been meeting January nineteenth, twenty-sixth, and February second, and our topic has been the ARPA funds. Um, this, these minutes are a little generalized because we've really not taken any action, we've been just having a lot of discussion. So, present were the committee, members of the board, uh, they would vary, kind of come and go depending on the meeting, the mayor, the treasurer, many of the department heads, representatives from the Paramount, Eric Mallett and Mark Foley, Cedar Representatives, Lyle Jepson and Tyle, Tyler Richardson. As I stated, the committee has been meeting weekly to discuss the use of the ARPA funds and work through the numerous requests before us. The requests in dollars are greater than the money to be awarded by about three million dollars. The committee and the departments have, have had open discussions in regards to priority and reality. It has been a good process with the committee developing a working matrix, which I have put on your desk, to score requests based on priority, impact, funding required, timelines, and whether or not it, it, um, will, uh, kind of generate new income coming in. Um, the departments have withdrawn a few requests and have settled on their priority needs. The committee also is weighing the requests based on other available funding for the projects, such as infrastructure money or, uh, efficiency, energy efficiency money. In discussion with two departments, Recreation and Fire, they were in need of support to start the bid process for their projects. Recreation was seeking proposals for the Main Street Pavilion, pending meeting the final rule requirement, completing the needed request to be presented by the treasurer and reviewed by the city attorney, and I so move. We'll certainly at least move the motion, uh, even though we've already approved the seeking proposal.
Second.
All right, have a motion, it has been seconded. Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
And again, the Fire Chief was authorized to seek proposals for the radio system upgrade with the same conditions applied to Recreation, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded. With all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
And our next meeting is scheduled for February ninth at five thirty here in the chambers. We will discuss the COVID pay requests. We have two, one by the mayor, one by the police chief, and we have, and some information that we'll be sharing with the tre, from the treasurer, um, in regards to our final guidelines, uh, what type of, um, application, if any, we're gonna be, uh, needing to be made out, and what we're gonna be looking at for motions to make sure we meet that federal rule. Um, we were going to discuss some of the IT issues, but Andrew, um, is not going to be available till next Wednesday, so I, we thought we'd push that to the next time, um, and then discuss, uh, those issues. So, uh, other than those two motions, it's information only. Um, I thank Alderman Neary for all this hard work on the, um, the matrix. Um, it is not in my wheelhouse to do something so delicate, so I appreciate his hard work. Um, and it's a work in progress. We have had, um, some changes in requests and, um, trying to whittle down that seven million dollar total.
Thank you, Alderman Davis. Any, any questions, comments? If not, it is still you, Alderman Davis, with public safety.
And we did. So, public, public safety meant on January twenty-fifth, members present were Alderman Neary and myself. Also present were Mayor Lair, Chief Lovett, Deputy Chief Scott Mangan, Alderman Talbot, Gilliam and Dundas, Treasurer Markowski, Mark Foley, and Joe Jean Cola. The topic were alarms. These are the alarms that are connected to the business, clubs, schools, banks, city buildings, et cetera. There are also street boxes in place that connect to the city fire department. This topic came before the board, pre-COVID, and, uh, we were made aware that the bills were not being sent to all users, and only a few were being billed, such as Mr. Jean Cola, Mr. Foley, Mr. Dave Fucci, and they were taking some issue with that action. Chief Lovett explained the function of the boxes and felt the added security to the businesses as they trip immediately to the fire station for smoke, fire, or water flow. He reviewed the charges the city incurs as maintenance is hired out. Our yearly cost budget is approximately about fifteen thousand dollars. Mr. Jean Cola and Mr. Foley felt that these alarms were a benefit to the city and requested that no charges be added. The discussion was around the issue, and the committee felt it was a benefit as a system they also have called, they also have a, a system, um, in their buildings that trip and call an answering service, then a dispatch, then the fire department, and this is certainly time lost. There are a hundred and fifty game, fifty-seven GameWell boxes privately owned, and I, um, attached the list on your desk. Ten are in the Rutland City schools, six on Rutland City buildings, and then the fifteen street boxes are city-owned. The discussion was that we increase the budget going forward on the municipal side to cover our costs. So, we would pay a hundred and fifty dollars per six buildings into that budget. Um, let's just see, it's, duh, 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 duh. Uh, and we would also bill the schools to do the same. All users would be billed a hundred and fifty dollars yearly. This would generate approximately twenty-five thousand, fifty dollars to cover the costs and allow some surplus for maintenance of the system. There was no motion out of committee as we lacked a form, so at this time, I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Have a motion to suspend the rules, it's been seconded. With all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
So, the motion out of committee at the time was to bill all users an amount of a hundred and fifty dollars yearly, and the revenue to be posted to the Fire Equipment Replacement Fund. The billing date, as I said on here, would be determined, but in discussing tonight with the chief and the treasurer, August of twenty-twenty-two will be the billing date, which will allow users an opportunity to prepare for that added cost, um, and I think we'll have to discuss whether there'll be a letter or some notification coming from the Fire Chief, uh, to notify. So, the motion, as I said, to bill all users an amount of a hundred and fifty dollars yearly, and I so move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, it's been seconded. Concerned with discussion, comments, debate, Alderman Dundas.
So, I just wanted to bring up one topic after talking to the chief after the meeting. The GameWell system is relatively old, I do think we should support it at this point. Um, the hundred and fifty dollars gets the support of that system on a very thin line budget. Um, other cities like Burlington, um, you know, municipalities around the Boston area have actually migrated their GameWell system to a radio-based system, which allows the same level of service, but, um, not with wires and stuff that have to be maintained, um, by pole trucks and contractors, that they can just come in and swap out a radio unit. Um, I'd like to make, uh, a suggestion that we change the hundred and fifty dollars yearly to two fifty yearly to create a bit of a capital fund, so that when the system, when that capital fund, uh, is big enough, they can replace the system entirely.
I will second for debate.
All right, so we have the motion. Uh, Alderman Dundas is offering amendment to change the amount from a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty here. Alderman Davis is seconded for debate.
Right, so if I may.
Yes.
Um, I don't disagree with what Mike is saying. My hesitancy of increasing it initially, right now, is that we have so many new users that, um, are unaware that this cost is going to be now a yearly cost to them. So, when you look at some of the players on the system, it's certainly more than affordable. But when you look at some of the other players on the system, it will be an impact to them. So, I think this is something we could revisit in a year and see what kind of revenue is coming in, how has it affected the entities that we build, and then take the opportunity to go from one fifty to two fifty. So, uh, I, I'm gonna vote against the amendment simply for that reason.
Thank you. Alderman Deploy.
I guess my only question is, is, is the hundred dollars a significant, it, would it build a capital fund able to, in our lifetime, uh, replace?
Yes, so...
I don't know what the cost of one of those is.
See, it's actually in here.
Fire department saying some of their radios are, you know, fifteen hundred.
So, it's a hundred and fifty, it's a hundred and fifty-seven boxes.
Yeah.
So, a hundred and fifty-seven times a hundred every year, right? So, that gives us fifteen thousand, right?
Seven hundred, fifteen thousand, seven hundred.
All right. Fifteen thousand.
So, there's a difference.
So, so that's fifteen thousand a year. We take ten years to build that fund, it's a hundred and fifty-seven, a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. That is significant amount, and should definitely get us, is the chief here?
Yep.
That should put us towards a radio system for those boxes, potentially, or a replacement or something.
You were talking about two hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, so what Alderman Deploy is asking is if we were to raise it to two fifty, to build that capital fund we talked about, so that you could replace the GameWell with a mo, more modern system.
Yeah.
Would a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars in ten years from now be significant enough to replace that with a system like the one Burlington?
If, if the current prices and everything, uh, hold, who knows in ten years if that would be the case, it would put us a lot closer to it.
Okay.
You know, I, I know that the, the decision will be a tough one, just because it is sort of individual group who will have to pay it the first time, um, you know, and I, I can see both your sides for this argument. Um, I don't know actually what the cost of the system would be because I, I have never asked them to, to come down and take a look.
Okay, thanks.
And if I, we don't have a, a price, like, per radio to, on that, for the hundred and fifty, each?
No, actually, uh, after you brought it up the other day, I called, but I haven't heard anything back yet.
Maybe if we can get that, it would help, you know, to know what that capital fund, if that capital fund would be sufficient to replace. I mean, maybe it gets us fifty or a hundred boxes or something, I don't know.
Right.
But with inflation, it might get us two.
Alderman Grusso.
Uh, yes, Mr. President, uh, I'm gonna vote with Alderman Davis on this, that this has gone through committee, it's been approved by committee, and I'm gonna make a motion to refer the motion to increase the prices back to public safety and deal with that at another time. I think the motion on the floor prior to that was to approve the one fifty that has been discussed and approved in committee, and I think we're kinda jumping the system around here, in my opinion. So, a motion to refer, I believe, is...
Take your turn, second.
So, you're putting, so you wanna do a motion to refer?
The pricing.
The price, proposed price increase to...
Back to public safety and, and then deal with the motion on the floor that the committee chair made.
Okay, and we have a second. So, we have a motion to refer, it's been seconded, to send a public, uh, safety committee increasing the alarm fee from a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty dollars, or any increase really, it sounds. Would all those in favor of the referral, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Referral carries.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yep.
And I'm sorry that the city attorney's not here to correct me. Um, I, I don't disagree with Alderman Grusso's, um, motion, and, and that's part of the statement I made, that I would, uh, would like to approve the hundred and fifty and then revisit in a year to see where we're at with revenue. But I think the, the motion to refer would occur if we weren't taking any action on the other motion, which we are. So, I think, I think, so what I'm saying is, we have to vote on the motion to either do a hundred and fifty, um, uh, charge per unit, per year. If we refer, if we have a motion to refer it back to committee, then we're taking no action on either.
I thought the motion to refer surpasses the regular motion.
It does, but, but it kills the motion on the floor, which is to approve a hundred and fifty. So, I don't think that's the intent.
That's not the intent.
Right.
I, I don't think that was the intent of his, but, but his is to refer back, or make a referral to public safety to discuss the...
Right, but I think we need to vote on the motion on the floor.
The point of order was that she made a motion.
And then refer back to, to committee, the two hundred and fifty-dollar request.
And Alderman Davis made a motion, but it, I didn't hear the motion to be, um, amended. There was just another motion made on top of it, and that's why I thought that this motion should be handled separately and that hers still stood. motion should be handled separately and that hers still stood. That's why I believe Roberts was of order, that was the proper way.
So we have a motion made by Alderman Davis.
There was.
There was an amendment by Alderman, uh, Dungus.
Yep.
Alderman Grosso made a motion to refer that issue from Alderman Dungus to committee.
To refer the amendment.
Just the amendment.
So, that motion was then passed.
Yep.
For the referral. I think we come back to Alderman Davis's original motion to take a vote on that.
Because they're both on the floor.
Okay.
Correct. But the, the motion, the amendment is now gone because you referred that to committee. Now we just have Alderman Davis's motion.
I'm good with that.
Call the question.
As long as you're.
Is it still debate?
So the mo, yes.
So we have the, the original motion out of committee.
Which is the 150, the original motion.
Um, okay.
So any further discussion, questions, debate on the motion with $150 is the rate we're setting. Hearing and seeing none, would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Done?
I think we're done.
We're done. All right. This brings us to Alderman Gillum, Charter and Ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Charter and Ordinance Committee met January 24th here in the chambers. Committee members present is Neary, Alderman Wollman, Davis, and Gillum. Others present was Dungus, Talbot, city attorney Blumer, and Mayor Alair. The agenda item was to propose shopping cart ordinance. The meeting was called at 5:30 PM. The city, uh, city attorney had walked the committee through the shopping, the new shopping cart proposal, ordinance with the committee, striking the old language and replacing it with new sections. Chapter four, adding subsections 4446, authorization definition, nuisance definitions in enforcement, 447, excuse me, 4447, effective cart nuisance abatement program, 4448, unlawful possession, 4449, identification requirements, and 4450, removal, impoundment, final disposal of unclaimed carts, and fines. The ordinance, once approved by the board, will take effect April 1st, 2022. On the minutes that I sent to everybody, the attachment is the letter that the city attorney has sent to all the businesses, 15 folks who are dealing with shopping carts, and the new language is also, was attached to that letter. Also, the 15 stores are also getting that language. The point of the, the, was to get some time so the businesses could respond to the new language that we put in place. I also like to thank the constituent service coordinator and executive assistant Heather Gura, is that how you pronounce her name?
Yes.
Thank you. She did a wonderful job assembling the, all the businesses who have carts and getting the mail out. So right now, everybody has that letter in hand, and we're waiting to hear from them. So the motion from committee by Alderman Neary is to send the full board to adopt the shopping cart ordinance, chapter 4, 446, 447, 448, 449, 4450. And with the attorney's correction of 445, section D changing five to three, it passed 302. As discussed also, committee, that we would table this motion, or table this ordinance until our next meeting, February 22nd, '22, for final approval by this board, and I salute.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion that's come out of committee, and you are, it's been seconded, and now are we immediately following it with the motion to table?
Correct.
Okay, and that's seconded, perfect. All right, would all those in favor of tabling this motion until the following meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
And obviously, this remains in committee until we actually move it out. The committee adjourned 6:35, motion by Alderman Davis, excuse me, Alderman Wollman Davis. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Alderman Gillum.
You can call me anything you like.
Any questions, comments?
Careful.
Hearing and seeing none. Before we move on to reports of select committees, the vote count for Peg Ploy for police commission, nine in favor, zero say no, and two are absent tonight. Congratulations, Peg.
Congratulations, Peg.
And welcome.
You're a great asset.
Absolutely.
All right, this now brings us to reports of select committees. Alderman Neary, parking committee.
Thank you, President Whitcomb. The parking committee met on January 20th, 2022. Members present were Alderman Neary, Alderman Gillum, Alderman Dungus, Commissioner Rotundo. Others present were Alderman Talbot, Officer Rosario, Commander Sheldon, Chris Attori, Karen Bossy, Police Commissioner Sean Sargent, excuse me. This was the first meeting of the ad hoc committee and considered a general kickoff meeting. Introductions were made, and Chair Neary began with an overview of the need, general focus, and current conditions of parking in Rutland. The group agreed to focus on three main areas, on-street parking, the parking garage, and the parking fund, beginning with on-street parking. The group had a robust discussion regarding challenges and opportunities of on-street parking. Some challenges included old and outdated equipment, usability of current kiosk parking, parking availability and prioritization, rates and allowable times, pavement markings and signage, and public opinion. Some opportunities included user-friendly and connected equipment, touchless mobile parking, inventorying current parking streets and systems, free parking, generating more in revenue, integrating with parking garage, parking passes, and handicap accessibility. Overall, the group agreed that much is to be done regarding on-street parking and that the current system is ineffective and difficult. Committee members agreed to collect data and information on the current system and potential new systems for discussion at the next meeting. The group did hear from members of the public. Karen Bossy expressed concerns, edit that, regarding handicap parking downtown, especially near the Bardwell House. Mrs. Bossy visits, visits family at the Bardwell House daily and expressed concerns for available handicap parking adjacent to the building and long-term handicap parking downtown. Mrs. Bossy stated there was some ambiguity in state statute. The committee will meet monthly on the third Thursday of the month, with the next meeting scheduled for February 17th at 5:30 PM.
Thank you, Alderman Neary. Any questions, comments for Alderman Neary? Hearing and.
I have one.
Absolutely.
Um, in regards to, you're using the parking garage, I'm assuming you'll look at the other lots that are out there, long-term lots, et cetera, et cetera, and then the involvement of the partnership?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Oh yeah.
Once they have a new director, that is, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. That was the intent, anyway.
Other questions for Alderman Neary? Thank you very much. All right, this brings us to reports of representatives, of which we have none. Our petition's letters, miscellaneous communication, rave car show announcement. What is the board's pleasure?
I'll move this to the rule.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules. It has been seconded. Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
And I'll move for the approval even though we don't have to approve anything. But it's very nice that they ask us for it.
Absolutely.
Second.
But we have a motion to approve, and it has been seconded. Any discussion, comments, questions, debate? Alderman Grosso.
Mr. Air publicly, they're planning to be July 9th and July 10th here in Rutland at the state fair. It will be their 42nd year of the rave show. I wanted to add that.
Thank you, Alderman Grosso. Any other questions, comments, feedback? Hearing and seeing none, but all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right, we have already done the board of control commissioners. This brings us to unfinished business. Has there any unfinished business come before the board? All right, hearing and seeing none, we're on to miscellaneous motions, resolutions, and new business. Up first, we have Roberts rules in the disposition of the raider charment amendment item. Now, within your package, it's the final page, there's email I sent out, which essentially outlines how we got to where we are. I'll recap it quickly, just because I know people are going to be interested in kind of what happened behind the scenes to get here. So we all know, previous meeting, Alderman DePoy made a motion. The motion did not move forward due to the inability to suspend the rules at that time, but this is the investigation where it led us to, and what we're going to do as far as taking action tonight. So the first point, and this is all upon attorney Blumer's review, so upon his review of Roberts rules, it technically does not address a motion to relieve a committee, which I believe is a term the maker of the motion used, and that was what Alderman DePoy used previously. Roberts rules does have a motion to discharge a committee. The purpose of this motion is to allow the assembly to take the matter out of a committee's hands after referring it to the committee and before the committee has made a final report on it, and the assembly itself can consider it. It's Roberts rules number 36. Because there was no point of order raised regarding the language of the motion, relieve versus discharge, attorney Blumer believes you would have the option to treat the motion as being subject to the same rules as, of rules to discharge a committee. The motion to discharge is described in number two above, seem to be the intent of the board. And I, I don't want to speak on behalf of anyone, but I do believe that was Alderman DePoy's.
So if I, so relieving a committee is Mason's rules?
Yeah.
And discharging a committee is Roberts rules. I just, I didn't catch that as I was doing the research. So relieving a committee and discharging a committee, same thing, different language, so if you'll accept that, discharging the committee was what the intent was.
I, I do think, unless there is an objection, that people understood that that was Alderman DePoy's intent to, and it essentially means the same thing. And so, as you see, the fourth point, when a motion to discharge is successfully passed, a successful motion is then needed to immediately, or needed immediately after to bring the matter that was originally referred to the committee before the assembly at that time, otherwise it dies. Because there was no successful motion to bring the matter before the assembly again, the issue died upon adjournment of that meeting. The motion may be renewed, and it says because Tuesday's meeting is considered new, Monday's meeting, obviously. So attorney Blumer points out, motions can't be renewed in the same session meeting, only reconsidered. The chair could either put it on the agenda himself or seek requests from whoever placed on the agenda. The item should be placed under miscellaneous motions on the agenda. Now, this is a discussion that had happened between now and then, so obviously it's back on the agenda, that's why we're discussing it right now. So the board of Alderman rules require all new motions be referred to committee, which is why rules normally need to be suspended in order to actually vote on a matter when it first comes up. Board of Alderman rule number 16. However, because this is a renewed motion rather than a new motion, it is not subject to that rule and does not require suspension of the rules. It can be voted upon in the meeting. So just so everyone understands, we're not going to be suspending the rules if someone chooses to make a motion, because this is technically renewed versus a brand-new motion. Final point, subsidiary motions still apply, though, so the board could vote to refer again, postpone to a time certain, postpone indefinitely, which would effectively kill it for the duration of the meeting, et cetera. That is what, this is how we got from there to here tonight. So if someone wishes to make the motion, that I don't, immediately don't have the language for, they may do so now and it would be considered a renewed motion.
Um, is a motion to table in order? So we can have the attorney here?
Um, I believe it does say subsidiary motions still apply, so I think you could table this.
I'd like to table it until, until our next meeting, so that we can have the attorney here to, you know, explain further any questions, so.
Second.
Motion to table.
Okay, so it, Tom, if you could, though, could you give the, the outline of what your original motion was? So we're tabling that, we're renewing it, but we're going to table it.
Motion to table, well, what you have, or what's on the agenda, I, I'll get back to it. It's the raider name and the proposed amendment to the charter was the raider name.
So it's a vote, you're asking for a vote.
So, yeah, I'm asking to table it to the next meeting.
All right.
So the attorney, for the attorney to be here.
You should ask it to go on the agenda.
All right.
The second.
All right, so a motion to table, and it has been seconded.
Non-debatable.
I'm just looking at last week's, last meeting's motions. There was two, a motion removing the mascot issue from committee, and then taking action and placing mascot language on the ballot. What's on the floor right now?
The ballot. That's why he tabled it.
Placing it on the ballot, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, perfect, thank you. All right, if there's no other clarifying questions to what we're tabling, non-debatable, so, all right, we have a motion to table, it has been seconded. Would all those in favor of tabling the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, real quick, we have one last thing. The board of civil authority proposed letter. No, I'm sorry. Now, Court Peck has a copy of this, and has the full board received this via email?
Yes.
Okay.
Right. So if I may ask a question, because there were a letter from the board of Alderman and a letter from the BCA, you were going to cover the BCA by signing for this as a clerk, a clerk, correct?
The, the discussion earlier today, through the mayor, myself.
The mayor's going to sign a letter.
And William was, basically, he would love to have every signature, but time is of the essence. He's looking to bring these documents to Mount Pelear with him on Thursday.
Right.
So he thought that having the mayor sign as an independent.
Right.
Authorizing the president, Alderman Whitcomb, to sign on behalf of the board, and for myself to sign on behalf of the board of civil authority, and I have listed each member under each of those designations.
Right.
So they are available. I know that Alderman Davis had sent out something in regards to potentially all board members signing themselves independently.
We're here.
My slight concern is, we're missing two, the show of force, and I know the mayor may want to speak on this, we think it's vitally important to have as many, many names of people there.
I agree, but I, I think it's, I think it's vitally important that us that are here sitting sign tonight, because I think that, and no disrespect for the chair, but I think it shows just a larger volume of interested folks. I, I know that two of the Aldermen are missing, but I still think that if the board members sitting and present should sign that, that, that letter as well.
And give, give the two members that are absent tonight every opportunity to sign as well.
Tomorrow, maybe.
When, you know, before it gets sent out. And I'll make that motion to circulate for signature.
Second.
All right, so the motion is going to circulate for signature, and this will be the copy that allows.
The board, right.
All the board members sign, mayor sign, and then clerk on behalf of board of civil authority.
Can you?
Yeah.
Mr. President, can you clarify what we're doing for the people at home? Because I think they don't understand what we're doing here.
Uh, certainly, I, actually, I'm happy to.
Because I think they need to know what's going on.
All right. Uh, before doing that, did you have a question, Alderman Talbot? All right. So this relates to the redistricting proposal that's come forward. So we worked as a board of civil authority, we submitted, I think unanimously, our suggestion for how we could redistrict Rutland to achieve the standards set forth, much different than what was originally proposed. And now there's sort of, I would call it a compromise proposal that's gone forth that, and I don't want to speak on behalf of everyone, I'll read this still, but it sounds as though it captures most of what we were hoping for as a board of civil authority, in terms of keeping Rutland in four wards and keeping people voting at the same polling station. So the letter would say, Honorable House Government Operations Committee, we, the Rutland City Board of Civil Authority, Rutland City Board of Aldermen, and Rutland City Mayor strongly encourage you to finalize a redistricting process that leaves Rutland City with four city-only districts. It is striking just how closely the proposed districts in the minority map you recently sent to local boards for comment mirrors the districts suggested independently by the Rutland Board of Civil Authority at the end of the last review process. The only real difference between the two maps is the inclusion of small portions of Rutland Town in two of the districts on the minority map. The population numbers from Rutland Town in both syntheses are small and change the overall population percentages in these two districts by a negligible amount. We would therefore suggest that residents of the Rutland, of both Rutland City and Town would be best served, the city was left with four districts completely in city limits. It is often the case that the city and towns' interests do not merge. To cite just one example that is currently under heavy discussion in the State House, is almost certain that whatever changes are made to pupil waiting in our schools will positively affect one municipality but negatively affect the other. One or more representatives working for both Rutland City and Rutland Town have conflicting messages from the two communities. Additionally, while we recognize that you are working with the data from the most recent U.S. census, we have concern that Rutland City was undercounted. It has been repeatedly documented that low-income populations are traditionally undercounted in census efforts. Given the high number of registered voters in Rutland City, over 11,000, and that Rutland City continues to maintain a youth population large enough to justify being its own school district, we feel very confident that Rutland City is home to many people who were missed in the recent count, and that if census numbers were accurate, there would be no doubt that four city-only districts were justified. Rutland City is also, is also looking to the future. We have significantly invested in marketing efforts and have seen numerous families move to our community in recent years. In addition, Rutland City is designated refugee resettlement community and has begun to welcome Afghan families here. We believe that the census numbers are incorrect now and our city's population will continue to steadily grow over the decade leading up to the next census count. For these reasons, we, the undersigned, strongly encourage the adoption of the proposed districts previously submitted by the Rutland City Board of Civil Authority for four city-only districts. We thank you for your detailed and diligent work throughout this process. Alderman Gillum.
There's also a letter coming from Rutland Town, is my understanding, parallel to this?
Would that be correct?
You don't know, okay.
You don't know.
So, I saw Tom Donnu's response, pretty much about making sure attached was our original discussion in the original map, so that will go with our letter as well?
The B.C.A.'s decision, yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. President, for reading that, because I really think people need to understand what's happening.
Well, and I think it's important for folks who are at home, asking themselves, did I or did I not make out the census, because that's why we're sitting here, if you did not make out your census.
Excellent point. Any other questions, comments, discussion on this? If not, we have them, Alderman covered.
I just wanted to remind everybody about the Public Works Committee meeting tomorrow, five-thirty here in the chambers, to discuss the LT CP five-year project schedule.
Very good. All right, we have a motion that has been seconded to circulate this for signature. For all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. And it'll be making its way around for you to sign.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, it's been seconded. For all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.